Hello, hello. You guys, we're gonna get started. There are empty seats scattered throughout here. If you have an empty seat next to you, can you raise your hand? Raise your hand if you have empty seats, all of you in the outside. If you can look at this, it's gonna be a long time to stand. So I encourage you, we've got empty seats over here, empty seats here. Are these empty seats back here over there? That one's not empty. Are those empty seats behind you there? Looks like a couple. Some empty seats in the back. Any folks back there have empty seats next to you? There's still some hands up here, folks. They're coming your way. Keep your hand up till somebody's found it. Looks like this gentleman's looking for... Are you looking for space over here? Okay, alright, great. Alright, so, we're gonna get started now, folks.
Well, welcome, everybody. Good evening, my name's Ted Wheeler. I have the privilege of serving as your mayor. I'm here with my colleagues, Commissioner Udaley, Commissioner Fritz, Commissioner Saltzman will be here, Commissioner Fish is here tonight. We want to welcome you all to our first community budget forum. I'm gonna talk a little bit in a few minutes about some of the larger issues related to this budget process, but for right now, I wanna thank you for taking an interest in this process. I know people are very, very busy and have lots of commitments elsewhere, and so, we all especially respect the fact that you chose to be here tonight to help us with this budget process. So, thank you, all of you, for being here tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Sylvia Chubrowski, and I will be helping to facilitate the meeting today. So I'll just start by briefly going over the agenda and what you can expect today. So we'll start again with a brief presentation from the mayor, and then we will jump right into public testimony. So, public testimony today is being taken by lottery. You should've received a ticket when you came in. If you would like to testify and you did not receive a ticket, please go back outside to the table out there to get a ticket. And the reason we're doing a lottery system is really to keep it fair. There are a lot of people here, and not everyone's gonna have a chance to speak, so in order to allow as many people to speak as possible and not have this be first come, first served, we're using the lottery system. For those of you who are not able to speak today, we do have comment forums, and you can write down those comments, and the Commissioner or the city council has committed to reading all of those comments and taking them into consideration. Today, we also have some invited testimony from the community engagement liaisons, and we'll be inviting them up throughout the evening. We also have interpretation available. We have ASL interpretation, Arabic interpretation, and Spanish interpretation, and I would just ask those interpreters to stand up and just tell... let us know what language. So she said that she's a Spanish...
Hola, muy buenas tardes. Soy el interprete de español. ¿Hay alguien aquí con necesidad de interpretar en español? Por favor, alza la mano.
Soy un traductor árabe. Si alguien quiere traducirlo árabe, estoy aquí.
And I am here tonight to provide sign language interpretation.
Okay, thank you. And also, we don't plan to have any breaks today, so if you need a break, just step outside. Restrooms are located just outside this door, and there's also some beverages in the back there, and a water fountain past those doors in the back. And now I'll turn it to Jean, who will explain the lottery process.
So, for the lottery process, Shannon, if you could bring over the tickets and we'll start doing the first drawing. Oh, we haven't. Okay. So, we're gonna pick nine tickets, and the way this is gonna work, you guys, we're gonna pick nine at a time. We have three seats right here, three seats right here, and then the three at the table. So we'll pick nine at a time, and when I pick yours, you're gonna be... we're gonna post it up there, you'll see it, and you'll be in one of those. Top is at the table, middle is in the backseat, bottom is these seats, and we'll move through them like that. We also... the city had Twitter feed for this... for these hearings, for these forums, over the last couple of weeks, and we're gonna pause a few points in the process to read a few of the Twitter... a few of the tweets that have come through. So we'll have that. And in addition to that, the council has invited several community liaisons to come to speak. We'll be starting with the Burmese community, and I understand we have a couple of folks from the Burmese community, so if you guys would like to take... go ahead and take a seat while we get started. In addition to that, the council would welcome any... if there are some folks with disabilities or young children, little children, and you need to leave early, we can take a few folks early that... outside the lottery system. So, is there anybody here with young children who are dying to get out the door? Okay, one, two... I'm gonna do three. One, two, three, there you go. Okay, you're one, you're two, you're three. You guys are the first three ones that are gonna come up there. You guys can come and sit in the chairs right up front. Are there any with disability that would like to speak early so they can leave early? Going, 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 gone. Okay, cool. Alright, so, with that...
Before we jump in, I'd like to make a few more comments.
Oh, yes, sorry.
Very good. And also, Open Signal, I think we need closed captioning, so I'm hoping that what's going out live has closed captioning. Could somebody from Open Signal please confirm that and let us know? So again, thank you, everybody, for being here. Again, I just wanna outline the process so far and where we're headed. In October of last year, I issued budget guidance to all of the city's bureaus, and I asked the bureaus to focus on very specific concepts. First, despite a strong economy, the cost of providing services in the city of Portland continues to significantly outpace revenue growth. So, costs are going like this, revenues are going like this, so even at the height of the economy with record revenues coming in, we still find ourselves in a situation where we have to reduce service levels. And I think all of you... I agree with that. And so, here's your opportunity to actually help us address that issue. There's key challenges that are facing our community. For example, increasing housing options remains important, reducing homelessness remains important, maintaining critical infrastructure, enhancing livability, ensuring public safety and police accountability, pursuing innovation, and pursuing resiliency. All continue to be important priorities. We've asked the bureaus to focus on their core missions and set and track performance measures to keep our government accountable. We asked bureaus to submit budget reduction options to give the council a realistic look at what it takes to maintain mission-critical programs while also prioritizing investments that address key challenges facing our community today. Just to give you one concrete example, last year, we spent about $27 million on addressing the homeless crisis. So that was homeless prevention, that was homeless interventions, emergency shelter services, addiction treatment, mental health services, and transition into housing. That was $27 million that was not spent even a few years prior. So that's just one example of the kind of expenditures that increasingly we need to consider as we address current issues. In January, the bureaus submitted their requested budgets based on the budget guidance. In March, the city budget office reviewed those budget requests and offered recommendations on... of their own, based on those requests. And I wanna be very clear, that's what you have heard about, but that was largely a budget balancing exercise. That's where we are tonight. The city council has not yet weighed in on any of these budgetary issues. So you are coming in at exactly the same time that we are coming in and evaluating the work that the bureaus and the budget office have provided. So the next step in the process after public input is I will provide my proposed budget at the end of April. That will be followed by council deliberations and the adoption of the budget in June. And I cannot underscore enough how challenging this process is going to be. As I said, the costs continue to grow faster than revenues. Our priorities for this budget are to increase the affordability and accessibility of housing to help those experiencing homelessness to get off and be able to stay off the streets, enhancing the livability of our city, not only downtown, but throughout the neighborhoods as well, and ensuring that Portland is a safe community for everyone. And it's been made very clear to me and to this entire council that we're looking for innovative and bold proposals. So, I want to underscore a couple of points tonight as we get into public testimony. First of all, if you're here with a large group and you're focused on a particular issue, we don't necessarily need to hear from 50 or 60 people on the same issue. It's okay to pick four or five or six people who are spokespeople for your group, and we'll ask all of you to come forward. We will count you. We will make sure that your group gets full credit for having everybody here and supporting it. That is item number one, and that helps us get through everybody who wants to testify and have their perspective heard. Beyond just supporting programs that were offered up for reduction by either the bureaus or the budget office, it's also really important for us to hear from you what's important to you. There's a lot of issues throughout the city, and this is a great opportunity to use this as a bit of a town hall forum, and let us know what issues are on your mind, what are you concerned about, where do you think we should be investing more, or alternatively, where do you think we should be investing less? And finally, since I see a bunch of signs in the back, I wanna be very clear, I don't approach budgeting as an exercise in reducing critical services. I will tell you, I am also looking very aggressively for revenue sources to help offset the cuts in this budget. So feel free to chime in on that as well. And last but not least, I will just ask everybody, since it's a crowded room and there's lots of people who want to testify, please use our council rules. Don't shout out, don't drown people out, don't boo people who are giving testimony that's different than your own opinion. Let's be respectful, hear everybody else. Thumbs up if you like something, thumbs down if you don't, but please don't shout out or boo or interrupt people's testimony. Can we do that tonight? Alright, thank you, everybody. I'll turn it back to the moderator. Thanks for being here.
Okay, thank you. So, before we begin, I do wanna just go over a few ground rules and tips to make this successful meeting. You know, first, treat everyone with respect. There's gonna be a lot of different points of view in the room today. Every point of view is valid, so keep that in mind. Next, make sure to honor the time limit. We're gonna have two minutes per person that speaks. Allison here will be our timekeeper, and she has... she will lift up a yellow sign when you have 30 seconds left and a red sign when your time is up, so we will ask you to keep within those time limits. And also, in order to respect the time, like the mayor said, if you agree with the point, give a thumbs up, raise your hand, instead of clapping and cheering loudly to save time. We encourage you to avoid repeating other people's comments. If you like what someone said, say "I agree with that person," and then save your time to make additional points. Also, please avoid side conversation. This is gonna be a loud space, so if you need to speak, just leave the room, and do silence your cellphones. And a couple of tips for your public testimony, make your key points first, because you may run out of time. Two minutes goes by very quickly. And also, if you find that your number is called in the lottery, but you would rather give your ticket to somebody else, you may do that. However, you can't give multiple tickets to one person so that that person has, you know, four, six, or eight minutes to speak. So with that, we will start with the first person here, which will be...
One point before we do, apparently we have maxed out the fire capacity, so if you finish speaking and you'd be willing to leave, as somebody leaves, we can let somebody else in. So bear that in mind. And also, I didn't point out the timekeeping. Allison, sitting over here on the corner, is gonna be showing you when your time is. When you see the yellow, that means you have 30 seconds left. When you see the red, please stop. And it's really about being fair for the other people to speak. Okay.
Hello, my name is Paul Mang Baugwalmam. I want to thank council for the opportunity to the Myanmar community to address you tonight. They're here to ask you to fund Prosper Portland Division aid package request. I am Division Midway Alliance community organizer. DMA is committed to a safe, healthy, and prosperous outer division street for the people who currently live, work, and own business along Division in East Portland. DMA started Myanmar neighborhood community office hour in 2016 as a volunteer program. Since that time, over 1,600 Myanmar community members have been helped through DMA office. 491 people have come to DMA for help so far this year. As DMA relationship built with the Myanmar community, members truly see DMA office as its neighborhood office. The Myanmar community members in the audience holding Green Funding Division Aid Package signs have all received support from DMA office. The testimony you hear tonight are stories of how this program had helped the Myanmar community living in East Portland. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time here today. My name is Mohammed Muhibula. Thank you for your time here. I came from Rakhine State in Myanmar and I'm a Rohingya. I came to Poland in 2015 from Malaysia. Today, you gave me opportunity to share about the neighborhood office. Since I came to Poland, Oregon, I'm working as a foglift operator. Because of my family issue, I've been in the legal troubles since 2016. Because of that issue, I've been known to the system, the legal system, and how things work out here. During that time, I needed a lot of support and help, and nobody I can find to get help. Since then, I even decided to move back to Malaysia without my family. After I found out there's a neighborhood office. The neighborhood office volunteers are helping me to get the meeting with my lawyer, my attorney, and the judge, and everything's well so far. And they're helping me for paperwork and meeting with... advising from their attorney, and they support me a lot. By their advice, I almost completed my probation periods, and I'm very successful with my probation. Because of that, I can focus on my job, and I can focus on my child, and I... my family's a lot better now. Without the help from neighborhood office, I might be back in Malaysia. And from... through the neighborhood office, I myself can help volunteer other community members. And I also let other people know that there is a neighborhood office, and they provide a lot of free service. And myself help translating. And myself is a parent of two kids. I sometime help childcare at the office. So I would like to say funding Division Midway package. Thank you.
I want to thank council for the opportunity for the Myanmar community address here. I came from Myanmar and I'm a Karenie. I came to Poland in 2010. For the past four years, I work as a home care provider for developmental disabled kids. And 2016, because of my family income, we got cut off from the Oregon Health Plan. So I kind of lost health insurance since then. I don't know what to do with it at the time. And at the time, I found out there is a neighborhood office, and they are helping for this. From there, they helped me to get into the marketplace, and now I'm covered. And other about reporting my weekly report for about my home care, they're helping me to what to do with that. In United States, to secure a job and keep the job is very important for a family like And especially for job and other family support and health insurance, neighborhood office is really helpful for my family and my community. So I would like to request to keep funding Division aid package. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for the council to allow me to speak here tonight. I never have imagined or have a dream like speaking in front of people, like all of you guys. And I will say hi to everyone. My name is Sondar Singh. I came from Chin State from Myanmar. I came here from Malaysia in 2011. I've been here for six years.
I've been here for six years. What I'm interested today is... I'm looking for to start my own business here in Poland. I'm working right now at a sushi bar in Poland. I'm looking for a good spot to open my business for the past three years. And I cannot find, and I don't know what to do with that. I save some money. But I need some more capital investment. And I met with Paul Mang from Division Midway Alliance. And they advised me. And they introduced me with the PSU Business Outreach Program. And they provide me with a training. And they get advise me what to do. And I, there is a, we can gather loan from the city, and I didn't know before that. And the PSU advisor Emily and Division Midway Alliance helped me through all those steps. I would like to say thank you for those help. And I'm really surprised what going on here today. If the office is no longer providing service. People like me is will really in trouble. And when I meet with the mainstream. People smile at me. But I, we don't know what to say, tell them back. So we're like idiot. So it's not that we're bad people, but we just difficult time to say hi back. I want to say today. I can do, taking picture very nice. And I can cook very good cook. And I need your help and your support. So thank you.
Thank you all. So we'll have these three here who had young children come up first. And Commissioner Yu Daily will invite a few folks up to testify after that. And just continuing that order, we're then going to call three of the lottery numbers, which are listed up there. I'll read those out a little bit later. I know that not everyone can probably see that. And there, we see several groups here that are representing certain issues. And we would invite testimony of three people from each of those groups. And I think I count about four groups. I see the red group, I'm just going to call you by color. The red group, the blue group, light green, dark green, and the, the green signs or... DSA, okay. So we'll, we'll address that in a moment.
But if you see your number up here, know that we're going to go through one round of the lottery first. So the first nine. By the way, we had a question about the timing on the previous. When there is interpretation, we're doubling the time to allow for the interpretation.
Good evening, my name is Dawn Hecker, and this is my son Arlo Hecker. We are here today to deliver nearly 3,000 petition signatures that support keeping all of our community centers and the Laurelhurst Dance Center open. I understand... I understand that you've also received a few postcards, handwritten postcards in the past week or so. And I don't know if you've heard, but we also had a little rally on St. Patrick's Day. On short notice, we gathered over 300 supporters. When we spoke to, when we went to the streets with our paper version of the petition, every person we spoke to said how obvious it was that the community resources, like our community centers, are non-negotiable. They, along with a properly funded school system, are part of a proactive solution to the problems our city faces today. We need to look at the long game here. I believe we've already said in all the ways possible and for all good reasons that it is not acceptable to shut down our precious community centers. We feel that we have yet again been put up to the job of staging the protest for you and for parks and recreation so that a short-term funding solution can buy us a little more time. It's a tremendous amount of effort, energy, and money that I would much rather pour into fundraising, increasing programming and revenue, and building a proper fence for the Woodstock Community Center. I'm sure that our protest has cost your offices a significant amount of time, energy, and money as well. We should also factor the costly effects on employee engagement and reduce consumer confidence in this repeated threat creates. Why do we have to be in opposition every year? Why can't we put our resources together and make this right instead? We're squabbling over $35,000 or even $200,000. Are we?
Hi.
Thank you.
My name is Julie Curran. I'm a Sellwood resident, working mother of three small children. This is my middle boy here. I'm here to oppose the proposed closure of Sellwood Community Center along with Woodstock, Fulton Park, Hillside, and Laurelhurst Dance Studio. I'm also the founder of Facebook group, Save Our Community Centers PDX, which has grown to nearly 300 members since founded February 1st. I founded that group in a moment of panic. As a working mom, I, like many families in our neighborhoods, rely on Sellwood Community Center's after-school program. 100 students from five to 11 years of age are bused directly from Llewellyn and Dunaway Elementary Schools to the community center for quality, affordable after-school care. There's 100 students there and 45 on the waitlist. During the summer programs, there's 170 spots, anywhere from 15 to 75 students on that waitlist. We need to be increasing services, not decreasing services. With the closure of the Boys and Girls Club in 2016, we lost a major support of childcare resources in our neighborhood. Nothing has replaced that. Both the schools are maxed out to capacity. They have expanded onsite after-school programs as far as they can for space limitations, and they each have their own lengthy waitlists. There is no Plan B. Not for me, not for 100-plus other families in the areas.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jake Herbst. I'm a father of two, a lifelong Portland resident, and a member of the Democratic Socialists of America. Despite the tents and makeshift shelters that populate every open patch of land throughout the city in the Portland area, we're experiencing an unprecedented boom in wealth. According to research from the Economic Policy Institute, well over 1,000 households in the Monoma County report incomes over and above $1 million. Rents have never been higher, and luxury condos seem to be popping up everywhere. Why should anyone be forced to sleep in a tent in the shadow of one of the dozens of cranes that are building new high-rises in our city? In the context of this abundance of wealth, why should the rest of us be forced to accept a city budget on cuts and austerity? Why not find a way to raise revenue? I say we tax the rich to fund housing assistance. Thank you.
Thank you. So now I'll call out the next lottery numbers. I'm only going to be calling the last three numbers on your ticket. So if you hear your number, please come up and sit in these chairs. There's three chairs here, three back there, and then three in the front row. I apologize.
By the way, if people are here as part of a group, and you'd like to come up and stand with the folks as they're speaking, that's fine. We're happy to have that happen.
Thank you. And I apologize. We actually have some invited testimony first, but I will go ahead and read out the numbers so that you're ready. So the numbers are, remember, the last three on your ticket. Commissioner?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I would like to ask Arlene Kamora from the, who's the chair of the Hazelwood Neighborhood Association, and Xena Mudafar from EPAP to come give two minutes of testimony. Hi, thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Xena Mudafar. I'm from Iraqi Society of Oregon and from EPAP Civic Engagement.
To encourage and support the city of Portland effectively communicate with Portland diverse and systematically under-gauge community. We undersigned, recommended that the citywide fund be created on contribution of 0.5% per city bureau budget to finance accommodation. These accommodations need to include, but not to be limited to, language interpretation and translation, childcare, and physical accessibility for city of Portland function. This fund will help our small community to reach the brilliant level of professional consultants and socially with American community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you very much. All right, to get to the point. I have asked for a time to speak about an ad package that ONI is putting out for $200,000 plus to bring the East Portland Neighborhood Office to some sort of equity, not entirely complete, but getting much closer so that we could do the work that involves our immigrant and community members as well as those marginalized by the process of displacement from inner Portland to outer East Portland. We thank you for this opportunity, and I want to support Xena in her work. She has been very, very helpful in making sure that we understand how difficult it is to have translation, and yet she tries so hard to get that information to her community. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. So now let's have the next three come up here.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. I'm Rob Noos. I'm the state representative for House District 42, which encompasses inner southeast Portland, a little sliver of northeast Portland in the Woodstock neighborhood. And I'm here this evening to oppose the proposed funding cuts to the Parks and Recreation Budget for the indoor community centers, particularly in the Sellwood and Woodstock community and the Laurelhurst Dance Studio. I became aware of this issue when my office started receiving emails from constituents who utilize the centers and who appreciate having some public indoor space as well. And I asked if there was something I could do about it, and so I said, sure, I could at least come to this. First and foremost, I just want to highlight how crucial it is to support public indoor spaces. These are places for families to come together and children to be active while they're protected from the elements. And, you know, in case you hadn't noticed, it rains here a little bit. Okay, good, people laugh. That was supposed to be a joke. All kidding aside, though, after-school and summer programs are constructive outlets for young people in these neighborhoods as well as affordable to their parents. Not everyone, as you know, works a standard nine-to-five schedule or can afford to take time off or hire a regular babysitter during summer breaks. And giving those kids even a couple of hours of structured activity time is beneficial to their development and helpful to their parents. Community centers, as we've heard, also offer affordable preschool and increasing rarity in our city. Pulling funding for these two centers means increasing workloads for the employees at the remaining centers, which means less individual attention for the young people that they are working with. I'll just, I'm getting the buzzer here. Please don't close these centers. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Representative, for being here. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, commissioners. My name is Michelle Sanders, and myself and my husband Miguel Salinas own a business called Attic Journals here in East Portland. I'm here to request that you fund the Small Business Growth Ad Package in the amount of $275,000 as a one-time allocation for the next year. Businesses owned by women and people of color represent a large majority of Portland small businesses, yet represent the smallest percentages of growth and wealth creation due to significant barriers that I myself have experienced. In partnership with Prosper Portland, the PSU Business Outreach Program and Accelerate have created executive education programs specifically geared towards helping underserved entrepreneurs scale their existing businesses. These programs arm us, have armed me, with the tools and education to overcome significant systemic challenges, create wealth, and contribute to the vitality of our community. As a kid raised in East Portland, who went to this high school, who worked hard to not become a truck driver, like the rest of my family, when I came into a life of a small business owner, working with the Business Outreach Program really acted as a translation service for me. There were so many pitfalls and so many ways that I could have made grave mistakes as a business owner and created problems for our entire community by being a poor employer, by creating businesses that you wouldn't be proud of. But because I aligned myself and found the resources of the Business Outreach Program through the Hispanic Chamber, through the city of Portland's own programs, we have really thrived. I'm able to negotiate conversations where people are asking, "Do you want 5,000 pieces, 25,000 pieces, or 50,000 pieces?" And I don't freak out when they ask those questions. I'm able to respond because I've been supported, aided, and abetted in the crime of growing and thriving as a business owner in this city. I want to conclude by saying that your support is critical to supporting the wealth creation in underserved communities. I came back to Portland because I knew that you were a city that believed in the dreams that I had. I could have done those in California or South Texas, but I came back home to do those with you. Please support these guys.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, my name is Ray Rafalik. I'm here to speak on behalf of Elders in Action. I'm a personal advocate with Elders in Action, have been that, been in that capacity since September of 2013. As a personal advocate, I've helped seniors who are trying to solve problems and cope with challenges that put them at risk in continuing to live independently, primarily health and financial risks. So through Elders in Action, their personal advocates have stepped forward to work directly with seniors who struggle on their own or don't have family members to help them. We get referrals from agencies that don't have staff to cover all the seniors in their needs in the community. Elders in Action responds to more than 3,000 requests for assistance from seniors each year. The staff and volunteers of Elders in Action extend the reach of social service programs, and the Elders in Action volunteers, more than 100 of them, multiply the benefits of these programs through the hours they dedicate to senior clients. multiply the benefits of these programs through the hours they dedicate to senior clients. So please continue funding Elders in Action so we can help senior residents of Portland solve their problems of daily living. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. So we'll have these two gentlemen come up. Oh, thank you.
We have three numbers that are missing so far, so number 751-430 and 527, if you're here. Oh, okay, great.
And are there any other elected officials in the room? We had Representative Noos. Is there any other elected official here? Very good, thank you.
So, number 686 has asked to speak with her group. So she's moving to the last three, and we'll be, you guys will be up next. Oh, he's part of your group? Okay. Well, why don't you guys sit right there? Well, we were gonna say, we were gonna suggest no more than three for the really big groups. I don't know how big your group is. I asked one group that's one row long. Okay, that's a big group. Okay. Let's start with three. So you guys pick three to go. And you'll be one of, so you could sit right there or whichever. Oh, but yeah, actually, why don't you switch with her, and then your whole group can go? Go ahead. Oh, oh, he's with that group too? Oh, all right.
Although the green was really in his color scheme.
Why don't you go ahead, and then we'll do that group?
My name is Kim Appleberry with the Fulton Community Association, and I'm here to support keeping Fulton Park rental facility open. You, the council, the council, we have many people, I'm not sure how you can count us, but do your best.
Can we see a show of hands again? Let's see how many people from Fulton. Is there anybody left in Fulton? Welcome, and thank you.
So council, in a number of years, has asked PPNR to make programs revenue-neutral to the general fund. The quotes I'm using, the numbers I'm using are all from the PPNR requested budget. It says, "On the PPNR budget proposal states, 'The savings generated from closure at Fulton Park would be realized through the reduction of maintenance service to the building as no general fund support is currently allocated to the operations at Fulton.'" I think Fulton is being unfairly lumped with Hillside. That makes sense in the oversight that you've had, but it doesn't make sense in the budget numbers. Fulton is not, uh, Park says it's not, there's no support from the general fund. Another factor that has been put forward in the budget for closure of Fulton is that the center, the funds need to go to other neighborhoods, that Fulton is in a more affluent and less diverse neighborhood. Well, that may be true, but there's a difference. Fulton is not a community center, it's a rental building. Who are the renters in there? They draw from the whole city. The contra dancers, the other dancers, the school draws from the whole city. It is no longer a local neighborhood facility.
Thank you, sir.
I just have to comment, actually, it's not just the whole city, it's the region. And we got a letter from somebody from Roseburg who was advocating for keeping it open, so it is something that's a service to the whole community.
Right. My name is Sue Songer, and I'm part of the Fulton team here. And I want to read a little bit from the vision statement that's on the front page of your website, saying that your vision is to develop parks, recreation facilities, and programs that promote community in the city. And we are doing your work for you. We are promoting community in a way that is rare to find. To be a part of the Saturday night group of dancers, you don't need to believe anything, you don't need to join anything. It helps if you can walk in time to music. But you pay a very modest fee to come. And the only thing that we ask is that people treat everyone in our presence with respect. We span all ages, and as Kim said, from all parts of the city. I want to read to you a few things people have said about coming to contra dancing. "We are like a big family. We gather to show joy, sadness, music, song, and dance, sweat and tears. It's the family you could have had if you could have chosen. This is the most welcoming group I've ever been in. I came here the first time alone, and I was nervous. Everyone took me in. After that, I never felt I had to come with anyone again. And from a child, I felt ambivalent about going to contra dances when I was young. But when I returned home from college and stepped into a dance hall, I was overcome with emotion. How fortunate I had been, growing up in such a wholesome, colorful, musical community. Now I hope to take my own children." We have family dances, and the, I think it's a testimony to how devoted we are to each other and to our activity, and to Fulton, that so many are here.
Thank you, appreciate it. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Wheeler. Commissioners, thank you for this opportunity to advocate for Elders in Action. My name is Barbara Bernstein, I'm the Executive Director. And the Office of Neighborhood Involvement has made, and the CBO has endorsed, a recommendation for an immediate and drastic cut to Elders in Action funding with the intention of discontinuing it completely in one year. Acting upon ONI's recommendation to defund Elders in Action will immediately diminish the city's current service and engagement of older adults without any alternate plan in place. Cutting services will immediately, cutting services immediately to an aging population whose needs are currently growing sends the wrong message to an important constituency. The City of Portland has made an important investment in our work, an investment that leverages three times its direct financial investment for programs and services and advocacy, and another 240,000 worth in volunteer hours. These hours represent an extraordinary human capital return on investment. Dismantling such community capacity and the longstanding relationships and partnerships it includes will needlessly create a costly and difficult task of rebuilding. There are two significant demographic changes facing our city today. Both bring with them challenges and delights. We are becoming a more ethnically and racially diverse city, and the City of Portland is making a concerted commitment to ethnic and racial equity. But we are also aging. And aging magnifies the cumulative effects of inequities that have impacted an individual's life course. In 2040, older adults will constitute 20% of the population, and one out of three of these will identify as non-white. The effects of race, ethnicity, gender, and class are multiplied as we age. Many of the stories you will hear about elders, oh, darn! Let me just say that I urge the city to continue to leverage its longstanding investment in Elders in Action and further its commitment to a thriving, age-friendly city. Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for being here.
So we'll have these three participants come up. Two members from the locally grown group, and one from the Fulton Park group. And then we're gonna ask two members of the Youth for Environmental Justice Group to come up, and then two members from the East Portland Action Plan to come up. And then we'll have five lottery numbers, and those, and there are nine lottery numbers, and I'll read those out now, so be ready. 656. We'll put this up a little bit higher, too. You can come up closer if you need to.
That's good, we have people paying attention over there, that's great. Good evening.
Good evening, thank you. Since somebody has already spoken eloquently about the community centers, I'm gonna speak about another issue, which is the graffiti abatement program. Graffiti has really changed the character of our city. As we know, it invites property crime and other kinds of crime. It diminishes both residential and commercial property values. It inhibits business activities such as retail and restaurants and other activities. And it really has a negative effect on tourism, which is a large part of our economy, which, because it creates a negative image of our city. And the longer graffiti stays up, the more negative effect it has. And while we do appreciate the-
Excuse me. Folks, that is very disrespectful. We said right up front that there would be people who would have different opinions than you do. And that is okay, that's a democracy. You can do this if you don't like what he's saying, but please do not hiss or shout or interrupt his testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. And while we do appreciate the PDX Reporter app, response times can be slow to nonexistent, given the sheer volume. And so, and it's really, I think, a joint responsibility of the city and its citizens to identify and abate graffiti. So I have four, a four-part proposal. Most people don't know that there are only two employees assigned to the graffiti abatement program, and those two positions are on the chopping block. So I would recommend increasing that by at least two. Number one, to create a mobile team to act as the eyes and ears of the city and identify graffiti on public, public property. Number two, to really start to enforce the graffiti laws and make property owners more responsible for graffiti that's on private property. And I'll finish with the last point, which is to increase volunteerism among the citizens by coordinating volunteer efforts to go out on a Saturday afternoon. I'm sure you get hundreds of people interested if you could coordinate that activity by taking crews out and, and just like Solve does, but not very often, to help create a solution to this problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm really nervous. I did not expect that. Thanks, Christine. Okay, so I'm here, my name is Jadeira, and I'm here to represent the redshirt crowd from the Fulton Park Contra Dance Group. And the, thanks, guys. Community centers and Fulton is part of the heart of the Parks and Rec Department in their mission to bring community together. And contra dance specifically is a community-building activity. And we work really hard to be a welcoming place, and we have people of all ages. And it's one of the few activities that I know of that you can participate in that's very accessible and doesn't require a lot of experience or knowledge or skill before you arrive, that you can participate in with people from all age ranges. There's not a lot of things like that around. And so we have people that come regularly every Saturday that are twenty-somethings and teenagers, all the way up to people in their seventies and eighties, I think, right? Just like Christine! Yes! So this is like a sort of demonstration of at least two of us that are here. Anyway, the Fulton has been Portland contra dances' home for many years, and it is kind of the rock that we gather at. And don't take Fulton away.
Thank you. Appreciate it very much. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Peter Adams. I'm the Financial Manager of the Friends of Woodstock Community Center. I'd like to speak in opposition to the proposed closure of the Fulton Hillside, Sellwood, and Woodstock Community Centers. Portland Parks and Rec have been blessed with funds collected through system development charges assessed on new development. They are required to, and they use these funds to acquire new property and develop new parks. But these SDC funds cannot be used to operate and maintain that inventory of parks. PPNR already has a huge problem with deferred maintenance. The SDC-led growth worsens the maintenance backlog and serves as an excuse to close centers which do not fit into their vision, a vision which apparently creates a gaping void in community centers south of Gleeson and west of Southeast 72nd Avenue. If PPNR fails to efficiently maintain its assets, the new facilities will in time also fall victim to neglect and under-investment. We are tired of repeated efforts to close these community centers in our neighborhoods. Tired of organizing rallies and petition drives to keep our centers open, centers that provide after-school programs for our children and grandchildren, fitness classes and art classes, meeting spaces for civic groups. We'd much rather spend our time enjoying these community jewels instead of working to keep them open. But if you think we are so tired that we will stop fighting, think again. The Friends of Woodstock Community Center was established in 2004 to fight a similar proposed closure. Since then, we have worked with PPNR, donating thousands of dollars and thousands of volunteer hours. We pay for routine janitorial services, for paper towels and toilet paper. We've replaced floors, we've installed a sustainable kitchen update, and take care of the yard maintenance. We are asking for a chance to renew our agreement with PPNR to support the community center in the future. But we need to know that we are working with a bureau that acknowledges and values our contribution, that manages its budget in a way that maintains existing facilities as well as building new ones, and one that will protect us from a process that knows the cost of everything and the value of nothing. Thank you.
Thank you. And just a reminder to please silently voice your support with thumb raises and hands up so that we have more time for speakers. I'll invite the members of the Youth for Environmental Justice up here, and I would ask two members of the East Portland Action Plan to be ready to speak next on behalf of your group.
Go ahead and come over. Those from East Portland Action Plan, there are two seats right over here.
And we do have some Twitter comments that we want to read, which we'll read after the Youth for Environmental Justice representatives speak.
I would like to thank everyone here for their time. I am immensely grateful to be able to share my thoughts and story with you all today. My name is Nia Callaway. I'm a member of Youth Environmental Justice Alliance.
Thanks, everyone.
I'm a sophomore at Parkrose High School and a native Portlander. I am here today to testify in favor of city-based funding for Youth Pass as we find alternative pathways for long-term funding through TRIMET. I remember riding the bus in Max almost every day with my mom when I was younger. Then once I was old enough to ride alone, I practically went everywhere. The first time I ever explored downtown was by way of Max. My grandfather has worked with TRIMET for over 35 years, and almost everyone in my family at one point or still currently uses public transportation to get around the city. So I'm no stranger to TRIMET or public transit. But I can tell you with full belief that in the two years that I have been in high school that I have used public transit more than in the previous years of my life combined. With Youth Pass, I am currently able to be a more engaged and flexible student and have, and be a very active leader in my community. I don't have to worry about my pass expiring in 2.5 hours. I can be a highly-involved participant of clubs, stay after to get help from my teacher, or support classmates at games and events. At Parkrose, approximately 348 students are currently getting to and from school or wherever else they need to be because of the expansion of the Youth Pass program. This is great participation for the first year of its program, of this program, and I expect more students to use it in the years to come. This program aids our cities, our city students in too many ways to count. Continued funding would benefit every Portland community whose youth can thrive by means of internships, youth groups, school clubs, and volunteering. Please ensure that Youth Pass is written into the city's budget so that we can have continued access for the 2018 through 19 school year. Again, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
First, I would like to thank you all for letting me speak. My name is Brandon Deng. I'm a resident of Portland, Oregon, a junior at David Douglas High School, this high school, and most importantly, a member of the Youth Environmental Justice Alliance, YASIA. I'm here today to talk about the Youth Pass program and why the continuation of funding the program is beneficial to the students of East Portland as a whole. This community budget forum is being held at this high school where roughly a third of the students here rely on this very program. As we continue to work in partnership with the city representatives to find long-term, sustainable funding for the Youth Pass, we want to ensure the next year is not left open. While we ideally foresee a Youth Pass program that is covered by TRIMET, we do not want to leave the next year open, especially as this has been the first implementation year here at David Douglas. here at David Douglas. The old-school buses here have a major issue of overcrowding. There are times in which we have to sit three students to a seat just to get home. Due to the access to Youth Pass, students have voiced seeing improvements in overcrowding on the school buses. I have another friend who, on occasion, misses the school bus. Youth Pass improved the situation by giving him an opportunity to arrive at school hassle-free. It's not just about schools, though. Everyday travel is very important. Youth Pass gives low-income students the privilege to commute. I strongly urge the city council to keep funding this program while we work to transition funding out of the city and into other sustainable sources. As we've voiced here, it continues to mean a lot to us students. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks to all of you.
So now, we will have two members of the East Portland Action Plan speak on behalf of their group.
Mi nombre es Adriana Govea. Hi, I'm here at the noon. My name is Adriana Govea. Thank you for coming to East Portland, and I would like to say thank you for support of East Portland Action Plan. I would like to say no del sentido contrario o de mala fe.
Not to be contrary or in bad faith.
Pero los grupos o los viarios no están trabajando como deberían de trabajar.
Because the groups, the groups that are giving the funds are not working how they should be.
Yo no vengo aquí a decirles cómo hagan su trabajo.
I'm not here to tell you how to do your job.
Pero vengo a pedirles que por favor desempeñen lo mejor que puedan.
But I'm here to ask you to please do the job the best that you can.
Yo no vengo a pedir cosas injustas. No vengo a pedir cosas que no son realistas. Vengo a pedir por toda una comunidad, pero más importante por East Portland Action Plan.
I'm not here to ask for anything that's unfair. I'm not here to ask for anything that's not realistic, but I am here to ask and stand up for the community and for, more than anything, the East Portland Action Plan.
Una vez más les vuelvo a decir gracias y para nosotros qué honor que vengan al este de Portland, al sureste.
And again, I would like to thank you, and again, for us, it's an honor that you came to East Portland.
Thank you. Gracias.
Hi, I'm Lori Boyson. I am a member of the Economic Development Subcommittee, I'm sorry, the East Portland Action Plan Economic Development Subcommittee. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak with you all tonight. One of the items on the Economic Development Subcommittee's strategic priorities is to fund the NPIs in East Portland, and part of that fund package is Prosper Portland's ad package for the Division Transit and Safety projects. I'm here to ask you to please fund that project as part of EPAP's economics priorities. I also am here to ask you to fund the Gateway Education Center and look for ways to make that a reality for East Portland. We all know that it is a priority for East Portland Action Plan, and we hope that you could find a way to fund that program because it would benefit our East Portland residents greatly. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. So in a moment, Jean will read some of the Twitter comments, and before that, we have a few lottery numbers that were drawn that are not sitting up here yet. So if you have one of these numbers, please get in the queue. We have 579, 673, 656, and 517.
We've got the first group. Oh, so let's do them in the- oh.
So we'll have the first three numbers sit up here and start providing testimony.
And after this group, Sophia, if you can be ready, we'll do a few of the tweets.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Chloe Thompson, and I am Open Signal's web development and IT manager. Open Signal offers English and Spanish-language technical classes with scholarship options for accessibility. Our classes certify producers to have free, ongoing access to our equipment library, facilities, and a platform to share the content they create. As part of our commitment to equity, our staff and board are growing to more accurately reflect the communities we serve. Forty-eight percent of our staff and sixty-six percent of our board are people of color. In the last half of 2017, or, goodness, 2017, forty-eight percent of students reported annual income under $30,000. Filmmaking is a means of creating and documenting both oral and visual histories, which is an inherently empowering act, specifically for histories which may otherwise be overlooked within the context of a rapidly-changing cityscape. Outside of classes, we host space, virtual, and physical for our intergenerational producer community to create collaborative content. By accessing our resources, people practice marketable skills through active learning. One of our programs, Echo Air, is a no-cost residency for youth filmmakers to gain technical skills and mentorship through telling their stories. We also partner with local organizations such as Outside the Frame, a film initiative working with houseless youth to break down barriers. Through my past personal experience as an at-risk youth, I understand the necessity of these outlets as a means to advance personal growth and resilience. There is no limit to the return value of investment in creating platforms and physical spaces which enable people to collectively gather, share stories, and document current events. These are reasons I choose to work with Open Signal and can recommit to the work our organization does on a daily basis. I implore you to do the same by protecting our budget in the upcoming cycle and preventing what would be a catastrophic 30% cut to our funding. Thank you for your previous support of our organization and your time today.
Thank you.
I'm Norman Farrell, and speaking in support of the Fulton Park Community Center Building. Some years ago, Fulton Park Center was transitioned to a rental, and as such, became not exactly a community center any longer, but a rental asset for the entire city of Portland. As you know, the community who depend on Fulton is in every part of Portland and beyond. From numbers, city budget, we have an idea that the cost per person per visit to use Fulton is very economical. Depending on what numbers we use, maybe as low as $2 per person per visit, making it maybe even the best bargain in the entire city from that standpoint. Cost of operations and maintenance, though, in this older building, not a surprise that they're huge, but realistic rents haven't been charged, rates haven't been increased, the building hasn't really been managed as if it is a true rental asset with aggressive booking and value-based costs. We expect landlords to maintain their building, but it doesn't seem that that's been happening either. Damage sustained over the years in the building is not repaired. I presume the city of Portland has some process through self-insurance to take care of this. What's happening with that? And last week, finally, we learned that from Portland Parks and Rec's operation, that there's really been a plan to sell the building all along. Very disturbing to those of us who value Fulton so highly. One story is told by the openness of public comment in a meeting like this, and another story is told if a closure decision and disposal of the building has already been made. What's the story? We're not exactly sure. But I can say this: If Fulton is closed, the city will lose revenue that it generates currently. And on top of that, I frankly, seriously doubt by looking at the budget numbers closely that unless people are fired, there's really going to be any serious tangible savings from stopping the operation of Fulton. I urge the city to find a way to think about managing the building differently, if possible. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is John Ward, and I'm new to Portland. I moved here two years ago, and I'm a happy camper. Portland is great. And one of the things that makes it great are its community centers. I live five minutes from the Woodstock Community Center. Our fans are out here. Every Wednesday, I have to write a memoir, and then I have to show up in Emily's class and read my memoir to the seniors at the class. And imagine, a senior with homework every week. But that's good, not bad. To my point, our senior citizens are an untapped source of wisdom, local history, and family memories. That vital information needs to be passed on to our children, grandchildren, neighbors, friends, and even to our governmental leaders. Because the senior citizens have been there, done that, and they have something to contribute. They need a local community center to provide the programs to keep them a vital part of our community. Portland has great community centers. They should be expanded, not torn down. A whole new wave of seniors is on their way. The boomers are starting to arrive in force. Keep Portland special. Save Woodstock, Sellwood, and the other Portland community centers.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. So we'll hear a few comments from the, a few tweets from the Twitter feed, and then we'll move into these three. You can move up.
So Sophia, are we ready to pull some up?
Yeah, make sure you keep them clean before you post them.
So I should say, if you know of one that you didn't see there, and it was full of expletives, it's not going to be read and it's not going to be posted. So first one, counter the bigness bias. Low-interest loans for ADUs, incentives for small-scale, middle-housing providers. And that's from Neil Heller. You have another one to post up there? I'd love to see a feasibility study funded jointly with Monoma County to evaluate the creation of a publicly-funded, through bonds, and operated fiber optic to the premises broadband internet utility. From Michael Ohana. Okay, let's do one more. Ted Wheeler, here is an idea. Give Portland police a sufficient budget to get staffing levels back to where they should be and prepare for the mass loss of officers who will be retiring soon. We need them to keep Portland safe. No boos, you guys. No boos. So, thank you. Okay, and we have another set here. There are several numbers that didn't come up, so if you, oh, are you one of the numbers that isn't up there? Okay. 656.
So if you are 673 or 517, this is your last chance to come take a seat. And before we get started, if you are a member of an organized group that has not had a member who spoke yet, please come see Jean so that we can make sure that we at least hear from one member of each group. And, oh, sorry, one more thing. And if your group has had many people speak, we would encourage you to consider giving your lottery ticket to others that may not be part of a group that may have other ideas.
Thank you for hearing everyone's testimony tonight. My name is Lindsay Grazel. I've lived in Portland since 1996, and I think the undercurrent of this entire conversation has to deal with the huge changes that Portland is going through in terms of density, and those changes make sense with what is in front of us. All of our transportation is being affected, all of our housing is being affected. And in light of that, I think it's important to think about the Portland Parks and Rec budget serving the needs of the people so that Portland continues to be a livable city. Everywhere you turn, we're facing challenges, and real estate is top on that list. When we close community centers and take them out of the pool as our density is increasing, we're creating a real big problem for people in Portland, especially when it is rainy so many months of the year. So I'm part of the Fulton Group. As you heard, we have dancing every Saturday night. Every time you open up the New York Times these days, there's an article about what's really important for the health of people in the communities is having strong social bonds and exercise, and we do both those things at the same time. So I would also like to advocate for keeping all community centers open. While I use Fulton now to dance, when my kids were younger, they learned how to swim at community centers. They went to after-school programs and summer programs all summer long when it was affordable. And the disappearance of that kind of stuff is going to be what makes Portland a more difficult city to live in as we go through this huge change.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Good evening.
My name is Olivia, and I'm with the Democratic Socialists of America. Every year, with every budget cycle, we see the same dance play out where necessary services are pitted against one another. Instead of feeling like they can depend on the city, vulnerable communities worry year after year whether or not their programs will stay funded. This is unacceptable. Portland is in the midst of record wealth and a booming economy. Our mayor has responded to this prosperity with an incongruent message. He's calling for a 5% reduction of services across the bureaus amounting to 4.5 million in cuts. Proposed scenarios include closing down four community centers, cutting funds to immigrant and refugee services, and shutdowns for other vital community services. Reasoning for this paints a narrative of labor unions and pensions of retired public workers as hoarding all the money, but we're not fooled by that. The people who are really hoarding all the money are the millionaires in the West Hills, the developers who own the luxury condos popping up overnight on every street corner. As wealth continues to grow in the city and the county, so does inequality. In 2015, the nearly 4,000 households that comprise the top 1% of Monoma County reported an average annual income of close to 1.2 million. Meanwhile, the majority of Portlanders are struggling to make rent. In fact, half the city residents believe quality of life is getting worse. Indeed, politicians are divesting from neighborhoods and schools and neglecting infrastructure, education, and public housing. After decades of austerity budgets, Portland has become a city that only works for the very wealthy. We say enough is enough. We reject scarcity budgets. We reject cuts. We reject a framework in which vital services are pitted against each other, and residents have to suffer closures of preschools so that other residents can be housed. We reject having to choose between necessities. We demand a budget that prioritizes the needs of the people. Imagine having fundamental rights for our residents such as housing for all, universal pre-K, fully-funded education, and support for immigrant communities. At a time of record wealth in the city of Portland, we should be taxing the rich to fund these services and fight for a city that works for all of us. Mayor Wheeler, as a beneficiary of the Trump tax cuts, we're calling on you to do something. If you don't, you'll be remembered as the millionaire mayor who sat on his hands and his pile of cash when he was asked to act.
Thank you, everyone, please. Thank you all. Thank you all. Please sit down. Please sit down. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Wheeler, commissioners, and everyone who came out tonight. The moral test of government is how that government treats those who are in the dawn of life, the children; those who are in the twilight of life, the elderly; those who are in the shadows of life, the sick, the needy, and the handicapped. Hubert Humphrey said this. "Elders in action is the face of morality," in Hubert Humphrey's definition of a moral government. "We are committed to helping older adults and the disabled to keep connected, to stay engaged, and to be empowered." Last Thursday, I accompanied a client to a bank branch in downtown. The branch closest to her had recently closed, so while I walked, she maneuvered many blocks in her electric wheelchair, choosing the crossings she knew were the easiest. We were blocked at one point because a homeless camp was spread over most of the sidewalk. While my client was hospitalized, the bank had charged five overdraft fees to her account. On a fixed income, my client faced a financial crisis when she got home. In our meeting at the bank, the manager told us that the customary practice of calling the client to warn of the overdraft had not occurred, possibly due to the move. Not only did he waive some of the fees, but he also gave my client a tutorial in online banking and a cautionary message about giving family members access to her account. In this case, the connection that elders in action strives to develop went both ways. As we were leaving, the manager looked at my client and said, 'When you come in again, I will know your name.'" For my client, she has a place and a person to connect with when she needs financial assistance, and she is empowered with her new knowledge of online banking. For the manager, he has a clearer understanding of how to serve the needs of the elders in our city. For me, Susan Sowers, a personal advocate with elders in action, all of my volunteer experiences have been invaluable. I am taking vital notes for my own future.
Thank you.
All the next two come up, please.
My name is Natala Sabalewskaya. My name is Natala Sabalewskaya. Good evening, and I am a community engagement liaison representing Russian-speaking community. And I thank you for this opportunity, and I'm here to ask you to support and find more money and funds for a second mobile playground van for East Portland. The second van was part of the- The second van was part of the 2017-18 cut recommendations. The result is that for all East Portland, there was just one van with a once-a-week visit schedule for PPR. There is no proposal to restore the second van for East Portland in the current budget cycle. With 40% of the school-age children living in East Portland, providing summer services that promote a healthy lifestyle and support community building is essential, all sites selected in East Portland qualify for free lunches with more than 50% of the children meeting their financial guidelines for free and reduced lunches. Further, of the total summer free for all concerts and movies provided throughout the city, East Portland, with 28% of the population, had just five movies and three concerts. It's mean 11% of total. Yes, we have two new developed wonderful parks, but there are also at least 19 other sites that are not developed. And most children live in that closest 19 undeveloped sizes, parks. A mobile playground van is one way of providing needed services to our future generations while encouraging community building. The cost of another mobile van is just $25,000, and we ask you to support, fund this money for this second van, mobile playground. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hello. My name is Jason Epton. I'm here to speak on behalf of Parks Maintaining and Continuing to Maintain the Fountains. The main reasons for Parks to continue maintaining fountains is we have a dedicated crew that is highly trained and focused in just maintenance of Parks' fountains. That is all we do, and we don't get called off for emergencies to go fix other things. Our number-one priority is the maintenance and daily operation of the fountains. The Parks has made a substantial investment when taking over the fountains from the Water Bureau with vehicles, tools, technology such as our SCADA system, and the training of our four-person crew. The location of these interactive and decorative fountains are in our parks, so public perception of the fountains is they are a park asset. When there is a complaint about our fountains, they call the Parks Bureau to let them know. When there's a problem with the fountains, we call the Parks Bureau to let them know. As of right now, our fountains crew is paired up with our pools crew because keeping like with like makes sense. Our interactive fountains are maintained to a standard of pool qualities, so we maintain pH-free chlorine, we monitor water temperature and water levels, and we're able to back each other, each work unit up, from fountains to pools. And the last reason why I think fountains should stay with Parks is because we want them. Parks is happy to do it, we love to do it, and we're passionate about what we do.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys, for your time.
Thank you. So we'll now have two representatives from CARE NOT COPS come up and speak, as well as one representative from the Children's Museum, and then we'll continue the lottery. And a couple of others as well.
Good evening, councilmembers and mayor. My name is Maria Boyer. I'm a teacher in the Portland and Beaverton Public School Districts, and I am with the CARE NOT COPS Mental Health, CARE NOT Police, and Community Coalition. We're back again for the second year in a row to demand an immediate reduction in the taxpayer-funded Portland Police Bureau budget, not the proposed increase of nearly $13 million. Last year, the PBB was allocated almost $217 million, yet are asking for $13 million in addition to that figure. And Portland is currently facing economic and social crises related to social services, as we've been hearing. They're increasing the numbers of houseless people, Portlanders losing their homes, their jobs, their healthcare, while the PBB currently spends nearly $600,000 every day. Community and neighborhood safety cannot be achieved with increased policing. This funding must be invested in community programs such as increased housing, transformative justice models, and education. We call for an immediate freeze on new PBB hires instead of the nearly 100 new positions proposed. The police budget proposes funding 93 more full-time armed and active police positions, including 21 community police. We need life-affirming and skilled staffing positions in other programs and city infrastructure, not more police officers. The budget calls for 21 new community police, who will be charged with more street patrols, broken windows policing, and local surveillance. Community policing targets working-class neighborhoods and communities of color, prioritizes areas of active gentrification, preferences protecting property over preventing individual harm, and brings more police into our communities, increasing targeting of people of color. Police will never be adequate or appropriate mental health responders. Never. The budget requests an additional $1.5 million for service coordination, and it increases both police and clinician positions under the Portland Police Bureau for provision of substance use and mental health services. The framework for these services is based in punitive and coercive measures rather than user-centered voluntary and supportive services. This funding must be invested directly into community-based services, not contingent on police interaction. We demand that the city council invest in life-affirming response to mental health crises by building up community-based and peer-led services and resources. Direct funds to people and organizations that have existing relationships with targeted or vulnerable populations, such as those who work with houseless people to find support, resources, and housing. With adequate resources, people who are connected with their existing networks and communities can provide long-term resources and support. Fund mental health advocates with experience in providing trauma-informed support, which would immensely benefit survivors of trauma-experiencing mental health emergencies. Fund those individuals and organizations that connect people with care and support following a mental health emergency rather than increased policing, which re-traumatizes and criminalizes people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Alyssa Pagano, and I'm with Don't Shoot Portland, and we're out here today supporting critical resistance and CARE NOT COPS. We've been protesting in the streets not just against police murder, against people like Kwanis Hayes, a black teenager who was killed by Portland police, Aaron Campbell, Kendra James, and the list goes on and on. These officers have not been brought to justice. Right now, the city of Oakland is in complete mayhem right now because people cannot get justice, and they continue to do what it is that they've always done, which is to target Black and Brown communities, especially poor ones. And when Maria just said that the purpose of community policing is to go into poor neighborhoods of Black and Brown people to humiliate them, to let them know just how low of a rung they are in society, that is what they do. That is synonymous with surveillance and what we all know as broken windows policing. That is the same thing, and please don't think that by calling it a different name that we are going to be fooled. No, Don't Shoot Portland does not show up in the streets every time the police abuse and kill people, but we're talking about people who are not being served. You said yourself that the reason that you can't help the people that are at places like the self-managed Village of Hope is because you tell homeless people that there are services in this city that they can go to in order to get what they need, when we know that they're underfunded. But who never has to be here? You have all of these community members that are here right now that are fighting over scraps, but you have the Democratic Socialists of America who are talking about taxing the rich? The people who never have to come to this table and beg for scraps are the police. They always get what they need. So I hope...
Thanks, everyone.
So to anybody that's here, so to anybody that's here right now that's wondering why it is that their programs are not getting funded, it is because we have an inflated police budget. And to anyone here that has never had a bad run-in with the cops, or if you have a police officer that's in your family, I would say, very good. I'm not attacking them, and we're not attacking them.
Thank you, your time is...
We are talking about outcomes. The outcomes of policing is racist and targets people who are already vulnerable, and we not plan to let it persist.
Thank you. Okay, everyone, please, we want to get through as many public comments as possible. So please, go ahead, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Wheeler and commissioners. I'm Ruth Shelley from Portland Children's Museum, here with a group of board and staff representing the 300,000 children and families that we serve every year, who we hope are going to bed right now. Three weeks ago, I sat before you to express our gratitude for the museum's long and successful partnership with the city, which dates back to 1946. When we became a private nonprofit in 2001, the city offered a generous lease that included utility payments. Thank you. We truly could not operate without this support. As you know, that lease will expire in 13 years, and you have asked us to find a new location. Last month, I asked that the city please continue to support us as we transition to a new home. Imagine our dismay when we learned that proposed budget cuts to Parks included the museum paying $120,000 per year for utilities. This would be a direct violation of our lease agreement, the foundation of our budget for 17 years. Now, more than ever, Portland Children's Museum needs the city's support, not cuts, to build its capacity for a new location. With our break-even budget, to suddenly absorb $120,000 each year without warning would have dire consequences. To cover this expense, we would need to either increase our admission price by 14%, almost $50 for a family of four. This is beyond most families' budget. Or, to stay affordable, we would need to lay off at least three employees, meaning that not only people lose their jobs, but also that the museum would be forced to eliminate free nights, our low sensory access play evenings for children with disabilities, our outreach to distant communities, and/or to close one day a week. Such cuts would also impact our ability to generate revenue, further compounding the burden. Our lease is a promise. Please keep that promise of partnership and let us increase, not diminish, our service to the children and families of Portland. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have a few folks here ready to testify, and I'm going to call off the remaining raffle numbers. We're going to get through as many of these as we can before our end time of 8:25 for public testimony. So the numbers are 437, 708, 676, 731, 433, 704, and 807. And remember that if you didn't get a chance to testify, we do have comment forms out on the front table. You probably got one as you walked in, so we encourage you to submit those.
Hi. My name is Sarieh Shenasi. I'm an immigrant from Iran and a cancer survivor. When I called Elders in Action, I can't speak English well, because... But I must tell you what Elders in Action did for me. When I called Elders in Action, I was totally hopeless because Social Security cut my benefits to $152 only. And when I called Elders in Action, they called, back-called me the other day, tomorrow after that, and tirelessly and selflessly continued to help me for four and five months. They connect for Senator's office, and finally, I get my total benefits from Social Security. I am so hopeful now because I can afford my life, and because of that, the kind people there is, I am a volunteer here and try to do one of thousands things that they did for me, I can do. And I beg you, don't cut their budget, because if you do it, you cut our hopes. We haven't other hopes. We haven't other helps here, just like me. The people like me doesn't have any hopes. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your being here.
Hi, I'm Sarah with the Portland National Lawyers Guild, the NLG, and we strongly support the investment in community services rather than policing and the goal of taking away police from mental health responses. We object to the recommendations of the police and city to increase funding for the armed, sworn officers. We urge council to listen to those who have direct experience with police violence and are most impacted by this proposed budget. The Bureau's 2018-19 budget request is $12.7 million increase from last year, which is approximately 90 positions. In council's work sessions, the city's budget office recommended approximately 50 new hires, a phased-in approach so that hits to the budget, don't happen all at once. However, a slow creep of armed law enforcement only leads to a slow creep, ah, well, yes, of fear and violence in our communities. This is true whether funding can be armed law enforcement, who provide that the Bureau calls for core services of patrolling and emergency responses, or whether it be for quoted "community policing." We are deeply concerned about the mismatch between the request of the evidence of police effectiveness. There is no strong evidence, for instance, that emergency response by armed police officers actually prevent harm, yet we all know well, too well, how late that gun violence by police officers have harmed the lives of many, many people in our communities and across the nation. We are also deeply concerned about the Bureau's use of the 21st-century policing, "community policing, livability," quote, without clear definitions as to how these terms are used and distinguished from broken windows policing, which focused on poverty crimes enforcement, disproportionately criminalizes low-income communities and communities of color. The mayor specifically named increasing public safety and police accountability as one of the top five priorities to achieve through this year's citywide budget. We believe that true safety and well-being will be accomplished not by increased funding for more armed police officers, but by true investing in our community through housing, food security, healthcare, mental healthcare, drug and alcohol treatment, education, and livable wage jobs.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Wheeler and members of the council. Thanks for the opportunity to speak to you about the budget. My name's Jeff Anderson. I'm executive director of the Portland Parks Foundation. The foundation was created by the city in 2001 as Portland's chief private fundraising partner for parks. Portland Parks Foundation shares the concern of many folks here tonight about the ongoing general fund cuts for PPNR in the proposed budget. Public parks, and that includes community centers, are very likely our most popular city service. 86% of Portlanders still rate their parks as good or excellent, and more than nine out of 10 residents use parks, at least on an annual basis. Parks advance community wealth, community health, and community culture. They are not an expendable amenity. They are as essential as any other service, supported by city budget dollars. Yet, the city budget offices' recommended cuts are disproportionately high, and in fact, it looks like 40% of all the cuts they're recommending are targeting our parks. Parks are integral to our core character as a city. They host major festivals, diverse cultural events and celebrations, and a variety of events promoting local enterprise. A recent study estimates the economic impact of local parks in Oregon at $1.9 billion and over 17,000 jobs, and Portland has a big slice of that pie in Oregon. Portlanders routinely give some 470,000 hours a year to volunteering in the parks, an annual value of $5.5 million or more. City Portland's budget should signal appreciation for that contribution and should reinforce, not undermine, the efforts of volunteers. In fact, the city should be looking for every additional opportunity to leverage goodwill and private resources that have already contributed so much to the parks around Portland. So in closing, I would urge you to support public parks the way Portland's public wants you to, and invest in what makes Portland not only livable but exceptional. And the Portland Parks Foundation stands ready to help, so thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Emily Goldenfields. I am a mother to a daughter over there actually sitting on her teacher's lap, and co-chair of the Portland Democratic Socialists of America. And I'm here because Mayor Wheeler has proposed citywide budget cuts of $4.5 million. And among the Bureau's proposed cuts is... And among the Bureau's proposed cuts is to close down the community center where my daughter is attending preschool for the second year. The city has already defunded the community preschools as of fall of 2018, and claims that they must be, quote, "self-sustaining." Our community preschool program has taught my daughter social skills, early literacy, fine motor skills, and has allowed her to flourish and be kindergarten-ready. I think many of us are surprised when we hear that the city needs to cut its budget. Just looking around, we see incredible, unprecedented wealth. We see luxury condos popping up on practically every other block, skyrocketing housing prices. Cuts just don't make sense, especially when so many residents are struggling to just live here. But we don't have to settle for cuts. For example, if we implemented a progressive city income tax, beginning at a modest 2% for individuals with incomes over $250,000 or $500,000 for joint filers, and progressively increase to 8% for individuals earning $1 million a year, or jointly $2 million, the city could generate $114 million a year. What could we do with $114 million a year? Well, under current city leadership, our community preschools and community centers are on the chopping block. What if, rather than defunding preschool and closing centers, we expanded them? What if we provided free, high-quality pre-K to every child in Portland?
Thank you, everyone.
Seattle does it, San Francisco does it, New York City does it, Denver does it, Washington DC and Boston do it. Why stop at pre-K? We can have transportation, housing, the sky is the limit. We need bold leadership, and we need to tax the rich and fund our city.
Thank you all. Please do sit down. Go ahead, sir.
Mayor Commissioners, my name is Karanja Cruz. I'm a Portland native. I'm a professional teacher by trade, taught elementary school for 13 years. I recently transitioned. Now I'm an entrepreneur, and I took out all of my retirement to start a cannabis retail business. I want to talk about the reallocation of tax dollars. I noticed that the police had a huge chunk of that cannabis tax dollars, and I want to talk about, have a conversation with you all about the reallocation, maybe towards, maybe that funding go towards education, maybe go towards supporting minority-owned businesses. I believe, Commissioner Udaley, you have a $1.2 million proposal. I'm suggesting that we increase that amount and that we put more towards education as well. That's all I have. Never been to a public testimony before, and hopefully I could have a conversation with you all.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Nice work.
So we'll have these three come up. So we've asked our last three speakers to try to limit their comments to one minute each, so that we can get three more in before the end.
You know, I think we, I think we can stay a couple of minutes and give them...
To give them each two?
Yeah, sure.
Perfect. Thank you.
Well, believe me, you don't want me to talk longer than a minute, okay?
Thank you.
My name's Kitsy Brown Mahoney. I'm from the Woodstock neighborhood. I've been a, I've lived down the street from Woodstock Community Center for 43 years. I wrote this for you. "I am the Woodstock Community Center. I am old, but I am tough. I am proud to stand before you. I am proud, but I am gruff. I am the Woodstock Community Center. I stand with other endangered centers. I struggle to not be cut from the budget, as if we were ungrateful renters. I am the Woodstock Community Center, where many events take place. I am happy to share my roster. I'm proud to be in your face. I am the Woodstock Community Center. I have fought to stay open for years. I understand the budget process. I have seen our people in tears. I am the Woodstock Community Center. Selwood, Hillside, and Fulton are in our same boat. We have the safe places and programs to keep our city afloat. I am the Woodstock Community Center, rallying to stay alive one more time. We submitted our petitions and our postcards, representing thousands added to this rhyme. I am the Woodstock Community Center, supporting many, young and old. Do not disservice our communities. The city appreciates us, really, or at least that is what we are told."
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners and Mayor. I'm Jessica Getman. I'm Board Chair of the Portland Children's Museum, and I just want to quickly underscore Ruth Shelley's comments to not have the Children's Museum be required to pay the $120,000 of utilities costs. As Board Chair and as a Board Member, I am constantly in awe of how the Children's Museum contributes to our community. Yearly, we have over 300,000 children and families that come visit on a daily basis. We have 125 students from preschool up to fifth grade that attend the Opal School, and we have thousands of teachers that access our academia and resources online to further their education. But what really moves me, more than anything, is the effort that the Board and the staff continuously has in advancing diversity, equity, inclusion, and access in our community here. A couple of examples would be, any family that's on public assistance can get into the Children's Museum for a dollar, or could have an annual membership for only $15. Just this past Saturday, children at the museum were fitted for $6 bike helmets, and then they tried out a safety course while the adults gave blood at a blood mobile in the parking lot. And this coming Friday, OHSU dental students will be on hand for our first Free Friday, where they're going to offer complimentary dental screenings.
That's great.
So, as you can see, we're more than just a children's museum. We are a place in this community. But as a Board Member, I also know it is quite hard to balance our budget every year, especially as expenses increase. And if we were forced to pay the utilities, then we would have to cut some of these resources that we provide the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you all.
My name is Dee White. I will be commenting on the Water Bureau budget tonight. I watched the Water Bureau's budget work session last Thursday and again on Friday. Thank you to Citizen Budget Advisors, Ms. Otero Serrano and Mr. Dozono, for your thoughtful and point-direct questions. Mrs. Otero Serrano, who is from Puerto Rico, commented to the Water Bureau, "The disaster in Puerto Rico was not the hurricane. The disaster was in our water infrastructure." She asked, "How long will it take the Water Bureau to become resilient to the inevitable earthquake?" The Water Bureau replied, "40 to 50 years." They say the boogaboos are the pipes. They say the conduits are very old and in need of replacement. They say they are planning on starting the budgeting process for this pipe and conduit capital improvement project in the next few years. This industry-driven policy and budgeting of the Water Bureau has resulted in a public health crisis in Portland that has nothing to do with cryptosporidium and a $500 million filtration plant, and everything to do with the neurotoxin-led, filthy, corroded pipes, and a poorly-maintained distribution system, ill-equipped to handle a seismic emergency. The first priority of the Water Bureau should be getting the lead out. We have the highest lead of any large water utility in the US, despite having a year and a half to follow the EPA and OHA's Directive 2016 to immediately reduce the lead in our water. It remains at dangerous levels throughout the city, and zero officials in our city, county, or state government seem to be too worried about it, given their bizarre silence. I'm going to repeat what I said. The budget and policy of the Water Bureau has resulted in a public health crisis in Portland that has nothing to do with the non-issue of cryptosporidium and a $500 million filtration plant, and everything to do with the neurotoxin-led, filthy, corroded pipes, and, thank you.
One more speaker, and the mayor... One more speaker that the mayor has agreed to hear, that's representing a group that's here. I want to remind you all to fill out your forms if you want written comment. The council has agreed that they will make sure that all of that gets reviewed.
Thank you. Thank you for accommodating me.
Thank you for being here.
Yep. My name is Mada Zapata. I'm the co-founder and CEO of a company called Switchboard. I'm also the Board President of Accelerate. Accelerate is a program that we created last year, thanks to the council's support, to help to support women entrepreneurs. And this year, we are asking for you to consider a $275,000 one-time allocation for the Small Business Growth Program, which supports both Accelerate and PSU's program as well. Women start businesses at five times the rate of men. They are 1/3 of the country's business owners, and women of color are the fastest-growing sector of entrepreneurs. We started Accelerate to support this community with education and financing, and to fuel economic growth in Oregon. It is estimated that investing $475 billion in women will create $4 trillion in GDP. In Portland, that translates to 13% growth of GDP. And in the years since we have started Accelerate, we have supported over 22 women entrepreneurs, and we anticipate supporting another 50 this year. They are across sectors, like the ones that you heard from, in automotive, in technology, beauty, healthcare, food, and beverage, and we have leveraged those dollars, most importantly. With private support, we have more than tripled the dollars that were originally granted. With your support, we will continue this program. It's critical to create ecosystems like this and to support women entrepreneurs on their own terms by providing access to programs like this that accommodate their needs around childcare, around supporting their families, around non-traditional work programs. And so we are asking for your support in continuing this program this year. Thank you.
Thank you.
So thank you, everyone, for your comments and for your patience with the process and your civility, and thank you to the city council. And before, we have some closing remarks from the mayor. I do want to remind you that there are two more events coming up. April 17th, there will be an event just like this one at Roosevelt High School at 6:30, and there will also be a Budget Committee hearing on May 10th from 6 until 8:30 at Portland City Hall to listen to public testimony. So there are two more opportunities to provide your comments.
So briefly, there's something that is on my mind, and I can't really articulate it yet, but a lot of you have mentioned it, and I want you to know I've heard it, and I'm going to reflect on it, and I'm going to see what changes we can make for next time. And what I'm hearing is there's a lot of people who come year after year to testify on behalf of the same programs that aren't actually ever reduced. So I'm going to think about how, if I support a program, we can give that program space so that people don't feel like they have to come and do this every year. So that's sort of thing number one. I've spoken enough. I want to give my colleagues some room here to share their thoughts. I just want to say thank you again. I appreciate everybody's being here tonight. I know you're all busy. You have many things you could be doing, and I think one of the great things about this city is people show up. Thank you for that. Commissioner Udaley? If you wanted to say anything.
Well, thanks again, everyone, for coming. I kept a tally of everyone's... Oh, okay, that wasn't me. Comments to get a sense of what people in the room were feeling, and I share your concerns and frustrations. This is a trying process, and it sometimes feels like we're really not getting to... We're not getting to what we need to get to in these budget cuts, and I'm sorry for that. And I'm not opposed to taxing the rich, however, we may be precluded from establishing a city tax at the state level. Okay, well, we'll talk later. Sorry, I'm exhausted, which is why I'm talking so slowly, and I'm going to pass it off to Commissioner Fritz now. Thank you.
Well, I'm angry. I'm not exhausted. I'm angry, and I'm angry with being in charge of Portland Parks and Recreation for now five years, and I want to thank every single person who came out here tonight, because, with all due respect, Mayor, if you take these people's concerns off the table, everything in Portland Parks and Recreation is important to somebody. It's about providing services, and it's about making our city livable, as Jeff Anderson said. And I want Jason from Parks, who takes care of the fountains. You have been here every single year that I've been here, having to defend your job, and just thank you, and thank you to Labor's 483 for all the work you do. Part of the reason that Parks needs more money is because we're finally paying our workers, some of them, most of them, $15 an hour, whereas before, like the preschool program, was being funded basically on the backs of the workers. And so now, last year, the council said preschool has to make its own way. We have a budget request in for $80,000 to provide scholarships for that. I don't, this is my 10th year on the council, I don't believe we can continue to cut and cut and cut, and we cut during the recession. Every year, asking for the exercise of cuts is so painful to the people whose services are being cut, to the people whose jobs are being cut, and to me, as somebody who is elected to try to provide basic services to everybody rather than cut them. And so I believe strongly that we need to look at new revenue this year. And again, I just want to thank you all for coming out. You make me really proud to be your Commissioner.
How many people here signed up to testify and did not get a chance to testify? So, Mayor, if we're going to have another hearing, I think we should figure out a system so that the people that were here tonight and didn't get to testify are first in the queue for the next hearing. And I think, I think we can use the honor system when we do it, but I would recommend that the next forum, someone who was here tonight and didn't get to testify should go first in the queue, so they get to testify at the next hearing. Otherwise, we're just wearing people out.
So I am certainly happy to add additional forums. I've got nothing but time. I want to make sure I get it right. I've got until the end of April, and then you will see my first cut at the budget. Some people said I'd made my mind up. I want to be very clear. I have not made my mind up, and I will not make my mind up until probably about three minutes before I present the proposed budget to the city council. So this is not just a theoretical exercise for me. Public input matters. I want to hear what people are thinking, and if people want to come and do an additional forum or an additional two forums, I'm getting.
I think if people were here tonight and did get to testify, they should go first in the queue, and it's late, so thank you all for your time and for joining us tonight, and for, I think, a very productive hearing.
Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it.[1767.51]